Number 531 on April 21st at 6:01 PM. And we have on attendance roll call, please.
You have Jerry.
Here.
Alicia.
Here.
Nadia.
Here.
Ellie.
Here.
Lisa.
Here.
Carrie.
Here.
David.
All right, if you'll rise and face the flag for the Plague of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Vision by our public schools, a community of learners committed to making the world a better place. Mission, learn, share, innovate, inspire. And our priorities are to personalize learning in the pursuit of academic excellence. Inspire students and staff to develop their character, share their talents, and apply their learning, and maintain excellence in resource management. I did not receive any cards for speakers. Did either of you receive any? Okay, so no public comment tonight. So we'll get to action on the agenda items. Any questions or discussion on the agenda as presented? Or would entertain a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Motion on the second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, agenda is approved. We will kick it off with a transportation presentation from Ms. Valen Dole.
Hi guys. I'm Valen Dole. I know I haven't met most of you yet. Hi, so I have been here for 11 years as the manager. And we up there have one supervisor, John Wheelock, who has 14 years of experience here. Does a great job running our buses and keeping them completely safe and on the road. And also is very, he saves a lot of money for our district because he's a very handy guy. We currently have 30 drivers total between myself and the subs. We, on this, I did a little slideshow here, letting you guys know that kind of does a little breakdown of our students, how many students we have and how many we currently are busing. Kind of interesting, we've got, we bus about 58% of our district. 45% are students who live within the walk zone or are outside of the district not needing transportation.
You tell me when you are home for it after this?
Sure, yeah. Each year, like start of the year during the summer, I, you know, work on doing our routing assignments, that's how we get that breakdown of how many students are on our buses. Do you guys have any questions on that before I flip over? Okay. The other, oh, yeah, that one, like, sorry. So this is just kind of giving you guys just some facts and information. Year to date, we've already done that 161,000 miles. We do put a lot of miles on our buses here in this district. We average that 23,000 a month. We have 13 full-size routes out on the road every day. We do four special ed routes. And then, it says four vans and cars, but we are down to two, two routes that are done by vans. We have 30 total units. So we do have six large buses that are spares out on the lot, which we tend to use quite often because of our sporting events. And then just if, you know, we have something extra that we have one down. We do have, again, one spare bus that has a wheelchair lift, those are definitely needed. And then we have a 10-passenger van along with a little bus, that is our activities bus, it's 14 passengers. So a type 3 driver, so you know, a coach or anybody that wants to obtain a type 3 certification with the DOT fiscal card can drive that. So even though it's a little bus, it has to say activities on the top, but they are allowed to drive that with 14 kerosene there. Let's see. We do.
I think what's important is why there's six or seven extra buses or six large buses are extra, is because a lot of times our routes aren't back in time before activities need to go. So you need to have those buses, you know, you just don't have buses during routes, all night could go out, you have to have extra buses because sometimes sports need to leave at 2 o'clock and you got out early, you get to somewhere else, and so you have to still have those route buses. So I think that's what people don't understand. Well, you just have these buses and just use those? No, we have to have these extra ones for these reasons and so forth. And so, and there's routes going all throughout the day, even, right?
Day, yes.
Over to Zed for special education students and back and forth, and so there's, there's buses going all day long.
All day long. We have special ed preschool that runs and that is, that is all during the middle of the day. And then, like as Mike said, we do run over to Cassin with three different vehicles throughout the day there. And then, yes, it does seem like a large number of spares, but they're, they actually are, they're on the road a lot. And during the winter, we always call one our chase bus because we never want a bus to, you know, go down or gel up or go into the ditch or something and then not have a warm bus to go bring the kids. So we always have, we always think of those items as well.
So when you say spares, you're not actually talking spares that are just sitting there, not even being used? They're always in use?
Some, ah, they're not always in use, no. But during the sports season, they are. They're heavily in use during our sports season, so you know that we don't have much of a downtime between our sports. And that does, that does bring that to that issue of where we, we have so many sports that go out before routes we get out. So you're trying to find a spare driver to drive those spare buses. Yeah, so then the next slide, Mike.
Can I just say one more thing? Because I run two to a horns over at the bus garage a little bit. You know, Val and John do a good job, but the reason why there's these extra buses is, you know, the DOT comes and inspects buses and sometimes they have to be down for servicing or for whatever. And John, and this year, you did amazing, I think there was like one or two buses.
Yes.
Out of all these buses that did pass and just had some small fixes that needed to be done and whatever, so that's awesome. And like she said, John does do all that work himself and goes and does a lot. Sometimes if he needs tires or whatever put on, you know, they may do that, but most of the work he does himself. And then to pass those inspections that need to happen every year is really important. So if you do have a bus go down because of that, you do need those buses as well.
Absolutely. They come, they come and inspect annually and we know when that inspection is, but you never know what they're looking for and nor, you know, do we want to know what they're looking for. Because we always want to make sure that the buses are on that road safely at all times. Yes, in cases that they do come in, they find something, they can tag it for, you know, a very small reason, and then it's down. So that's, it's down for that day until you can get it fixed again. So there, that's the other nice part of having spares. The other ones with the spare short lifts, things happen where you just can't get a, you know, wheelchair lift down. You have to really have a few spares on your fleet to make sure that you can get the kids to them from school. Yes, and, and as Mike said, not to toot an horn, I guess, but yes, I do feel that the bus garage runs excellent. The drivers are great. We have a very great group of bus drivers, I feel. I also know that they enjoy what they do, they enjoy where they work. This has a lot of, a lot of reasons behind it. First and foremost, that I've been here 11 years in the board and I've stayed at this all the time, the board has always been so supportive. Every superintendent's been supportive of us and staff. Discipline, area actions with our principals, hands down, I, it's, it's great. Parent interaction, communication, being a mother of five kids, I know that parents need to call, something's happened on the school bus, they need to be heard. And the kids just, you know, it's their children. I mean, I want to hear it too, and we don't want things to be happening on the bus at any time. I know the drivers do really respect, you know, the district because we are owned and operated by Byron Public Schools. When you do get into some of these different scenarios where the districts are contracted out, you lose that one-on-one with your parents and your district because they have the say. They have the say in what's happening. And between Pine Island and Cassin and myself, we get along so well and we are always there to help each other out. When you get into contractors, they're a business. They want to definitely stay to their own and not have that neighborly feel, so we can actually like really call on each other, which we've had to throughout the last few years since we all are finding that negative of, phew, we're all short bus drivers. And so we've helped Cassin and in return they helped us and same as Pine Island. We also have figured out, you know, just to show you guys how it looks, how busy we are throughout with the trips and activities, field trips and just the away events for sports. Between August and April, we have nearly done four on every dress so far. And we have a great little program that calculates everything out for us. We're very up to date with that. We use a new program called Easy Route, which really breaks things down for us nicely. Guess another few couple things, I think I've already touched on though, like, you know, our challenges. Obviously, every department has their challenges and we're no different. And I think those challenges, like I said, are the shortage of bus drivers everywhere. And then the other thing we do find is that sporting challenge of, it's great that we're getting bigger, it's also one of those things where our district's getting bigger, we're moving up into different, different areas and going further. So we do see that our buses have to leave a little earlier, so that can be a little challenging. But the, you know, the positives definitely outweigh our negative here in Byron. So, do you guys?
Questions?
Having questions for me? I'm not a speaker, just so you know. I, those of you that know me in here know that I can talk a lot, but don't do well in this part. Right? Tom tries to run out the door some days as he's leaving and I'm like, wait, what were they?
You said you have 30 drivers, including subs. What would be the ideal number for you to have?
Well, we definitely would.
If you're dreaming.
Dreaming. 35. 35 would be a very nice number to have. With, with those other three, we would, with the buy, it'd be nice to see three that want to take on a full-time route. Just take on a full-time route. That was really helpful, thank you. Yeah, shout out to Steve, who gets my kids to school, to and from safely every day. They appreciate him so much. Have you ever had to not have a route? Have you ever had to turn down a sporting event or turn, or like not be able to pick up kids one day? Well, you know, we have not been able to have just turn down a sporting event. We get very creative with that, so, and our coaches are really good at helping that out too. You know, even Tom back here, he's been driving again, it's like, hey, I can do this, or could you move this around? I mean, with everybody's input, you know, that's, the coaches see it. Justin Blum, for instance, he's taken over like his golf area, he's like, hey Val, let's do this, do this. Hey, yeah, you, thank you. You know, that's really helpful. Do, no, we've been very fortunate where we have not had to shut routes down. Again, with, you know, the athletic department and coaches being able to say, yep, we can push this out, you know, we just may have to give that other school a call, we're not going to shut for 15 more minutes, so.
Sometimes you've called Cassin and said, do you have an extra driver around or whatever?
Absolutely.
You know, we share sometimes that way, right?
And we do.
Yeah, so sometimes you do that to alter schedules, you know, or whatever, but yeah, most of the time they can get people there during the routes, you know, to the best they can not to have to shut down a route. I know our schools have done that, and my previous school district did do that, would just reach out and say, there's no route tomorrow and we don't have a driver or you have to throw kids there. Fortunately, Val's been able to make that, so we don't have to do that. I also want to give Val and John kudos because on those snowy days, I get up at 5:00 or so and first person I text is Val, who and John have already been out on the roads and out on all the dirt roads, and they tell me, yes, we can get the buses through, or no, it's 10 inches, we can still get those buses through. Well, wait, I'm going to call you on that. You know, but they're already out driving the roads and checking it out throughout the district. And it's a, it can be a pretty big district when you think of all the roads that we have. And so I really appreciate them. I won't say that they're the ones who call school because I don't want emails to be sent to them, but they're the ones who give me the information that I need to also give to their superintendents about, you know, because sometimes they don't have their people out, but we have our people and Val and John do a good job doing that. And so I really appreciate that. And then tomorrow is Bus Driver Appreciation Day, so I will be bringing by donuts, I hope in the morning, bottles has enough for me to bring over. And Val, if you want a special donut, you send it what you want to me.
I definitely would do that. Thank you. And again, this is, again, the support that everyone shows and our superintendent said. Let's take, like, what is Val and John thinking? Because I know, I know a few other of my areas that they don't, you know, everybody just takes into consideration like, oh, we're just going to call school, or we're just going to make those buses go. But when you have that support of your superintendent and Mike, like I said, Mike calls really early, texts really early, yup, you're up and at 'em. You know, just to say, because he don't know, you know, because he's not out, even though he's out driving, but he doesn't know what makes that bus in those gravel roads, so thank you for that, Mike.
Any other questions for Val?
Yeah.
Just to understand how, how the buses work. So with the 400 trips this year, right, it looks like it's at least two trips per day, two additional activities trips a day. Is that approximately right, or is there like a range of no trips some days and then six trips some other days?
Yes, so there's a range of no trips some days. It's just when our sports are on, mostly real heavy in the sports season. Spring, all the little kids are going to the zoo or up to, you know, on a field trip. There is a couple different classes that go, high school classes that go to parks or do, I think it's a, maybe it's, it's not called sportsman biology or, that's what it was called.
Environmental science.
Environmental.
Yeah.
Yes, so it is not all.
Not just sports.
Yeah, a lot of sports and mostly, majority of sports.
But Val, for field trips, for example, for grade level goes, if you take two or three buses, does that count as three trips or does that still count as one? Maybe you can ask.
That is still just counted as one. That isn't, does, that 400 doesn't show that we've sent four buses out per trip. Oh, yes. Yeah, it is a lot.
And do you have, and you also service Rochester, the two areas in Rochester that we have.
Okay.
And is there like a minimum number of kids per trip or something?
On the routes. So the, you know, our buses.
For activities as well?
Yeah, for our buses, depending on each bus, you know, we usually say, we don't want to put more than 50 high schoolers, middle school high schoolers on the bus. You know, they're larger, the seats, even though it says it's an 83-passenger bus, you know, definitely, I mean, you want to pack that many, but we wouldn't. When you get to the kindergarten through that fifth grade, on a field trip, we usually run it right about 60, 60 kids. We do have buses with undercarriage, so under storage, which, like right now, we are putting a little bit more kids on, we're pushing that seventh, eighth, C squad, baseball maybe if it works. So then all their bat banks can go underneath. So we have ordered buses to make sure that, okay, get more kids on, but all their bat banks, because one bat bank is about as big as a student. Sometimes we have to take trailers. We do, you know, take trailers to sporting events. The other things with Rochester, roughly we run right about that 60, 60 kids, 62, I don't like to push those, but you know, those over Rochester kids, so call them Rochester kids. But our buses don't just specifically go to Rochester for just Rochester students. So we do go and we're on our way. Our lines are so close, if you're out on 60th by Monkey Junction, they call it, right there off Valley High Road, that neighborhood just to the north of that little church is Byron's. You know, we have probably 12 kids that live in that neighborhood. So even before, you know, for me, somewhere you have to turn around. So therefore they just, you know, went past it, picked, went past Rochester and picked them up, but yeah.
Is there like a minimum number of kids per bus?
I like to shut that right off, about that 60.
Okay.
65.
So you do not have routes that have fewer than 60 kids and you just combine them somehow?
It depends on like, let's say you are going, since we have two different routes, we have middle school, high school, and then K, then elementary. So you bring in like a larger load of kids from Rochester, you're, maybe you're at that full limit or out, you know, towards the country, and then all of a sudden, I'm sorry, you're out in the country, you're putting on the miles, you don't have maybe as many kids clearly, but you're putting on the miles out there, you come back in, you maybe only have 30 kids on, but then you're going dumping off kids at the middle school or the high school. Getting rid of them. And then, then you're going back around and you're filling those buses up with in-town kids. And our in-town buses are full.
For, for sports wise though, if you're, for example, if it's just a varsity team that's going to a section, well, then they take a bus, you know, you might, you won't have 50 kids, you might only have 20 or something like that, right? So, and the coaches and stuff, so. And then we've offered and a lot of our coaches, we pay our coaches, you know, to, to drive, and so a lot of our coaches have taken this up and got their license and makes it more convenient for them. And, you know, then come and go and so forth, but, so they appreciate the coaches that do that. It helps us with drivers that are fine, especially if they leave early and so forth.
Thank you. Yeah, you're welcome. Thanks.
All right, we'll move on to the superintendent report.
Yes, relatively spring sports and activities have started, so our teams are busy trying to get all their games in, we hope for great weather, and so just want to, we had our first baseball game out last, last week out on the field, and so hopefully that, hopefully the weather holds up for everybody and good luck to everybody. A lot of their season, summer seasons don't end until June, so it goes past school. We also have a lot of people recognize, I mentioned the bus drivers, I don't think I have them on here, but this is, when you look at all the different appreciation weeks and so forth that have been, so at one members, if you want to, you know, send something to people, you certainly can, but just know that, you know, between our schools and our district, we are recognizing, you know, everybody, if we go forward, oh, the 23rd is that Ministry of Assistance Day. I got two days, right? So, and then, so, but we want to thank everybody that's part of it and we, you know, we don't want to just appreciate them for one week or one day, but we want to appreciate them throughout. But it is a nice way to be able to say thank you for what they do and we try to send, like I said, texts or emails or principals will take care of a lot. April is also, we're in the middle of the testing month right now. A lot of our students, staff are busy doing the MCAs and math re and science, our high school students are taking the ACTs. We just have a lot of things going on right now. Stress level is a little up because you have to follow certain procedures as a staff member. You want to make sure everyone's quiet and everyone's orderly and the kids, they get a little stressed out. You know, I've been saying things in the buzz about just keep calm and make sure they're getting enough, kids getting enough food and sleep and so forth. And our staff does a great job of taking care of them during, during testing time. But again, remember, testing is just a snapshot on that one day and there's just a whole lot more that goes on, but it is something that we need to do. And then also prom is this Saturday, so Grand March begins at the Performing Arts Center at 4:30. So if you want to go and be part of Grand March, you certainly can. I know they charge $5 a person to view it because then they use the money for the following year for props and so forth, because they decorate that area pretty well. It's great for the kids to do that and you see, then they go off and do their prom stuff after that. And so I want to thank everybody for, but it's a lot of work to put all that stuff together, so. I also wanted to let you know that recently because of our financial audit last year or this past, back in December, then we worked with S&amp;P Global for our bond ratings and so forth, and they were sent a copy of our audit and so forth, so then they called, met with Dan and I and two people from our financial advisors from Ellers, and we read a double A minus rating and because of that audit and kind of our present situation that they've downgraded us to a A minus rating. Now that doesn't affect any present loans because we're on a fine, we're on a fixed rates and so forth, but you know, sometimes we will get Ellers to come and say, well, if you refinance at this time, you can do this and this is how much you would save. We just want to save as much, so we may not be able to refinance, may not be worth for the district to refinance at the time or in the future. If you were to go out and, and build that or a thing, another, you know, a bond referendum or something and needed to take a loan out, you may not get as, as low of an interest rate at that time. Now what they will do is reevaluate the district's financial situation based in probably two years is what they do, but things kind of settle, figure things out, you know, we'll talk about the referendum coming up, so that will certainly, that would certainly help. But they will reevaluate where you're at. And if things are progressing well, they would then improve that rating possibly. If things are, continue to go, you know, down a little bit, then they may also, may decrease the rating in the future. But right now, this is kind of where they felt, they sent it out to all their investors, so it's out there. I wanted to let you know and the community know that it's, it's something that's happened. But again, it doesn't affect what we're doing exactly right now, it would affect future situations. In our present enrollment right now, as we look at, right here, 24, 25, let me go down. Here we are at 2313, so we are holding steady at 2313. So the future ones, if you look at it, you can look at the future years and see, that, that's pretty in flux right now of adding students and taking students away, but that's what we're using for preliminary budgets in the future and so forth. But you can take a look at those at that, at that point. Any questions for my report?
No.
No. Thank you.
All right, summary of the budget committee meeting, which was earlier today.
Yeah, so anybody who was there can also tune in, but you know, Dan, I did a great job presenting information to the budget committee. There were 13, I'll find my notes here, there were 13, there's 14 people on the committee, 12 of them had attended today, so we had a great turnout. We first showed the revised budget update, and that's also in your consent agenda with graphs in your consent agenda about how our expenditures and revenues are shaping up towards the revised budget that was put out in December. So we are on track, we're tracking well for that, so that was good, so they got to see that and asked questions. Dan started to talk about some of the assumptions and some of the ideas, like enrollment, what he would, as we look at preliminary budgets. So in the next month or so, we'll be looking at preliminary budgets, looking at what the legislation does and so forth. And by, because by June 30th, the board has to approve a budget, a preliminary budget for next year for the 25, 26 school year. So we'll have a little bit more discussion on May 4th on where things are going. We'll meet with the budget committee again on May 19th. And then by, at the June meeting, the second June meeting, you will have all that information and then you'll approve a preliminary budget for next year at that time. However, it is just that, a preliminary budget. There's a lot of things that go in there, especially next year when you look at possible passing of the referendum. You look at the October 1 enrollments, you look at any of the other legislative stuff coming in, you look at any, what impacted 2.74% on students enrollment might have and so forth. And then after the referendum is completed sometime in December and negotiations are finished, you know, probably next year, it might be like January, that finance director will come back with a revised budget, just like Julie Stink did this year in December. And then you start going through all your revenues or expenditures based on that revised budget for the year and make sure that you're tracking the right way so you're not going further in the hole and hopefully gaining towards your fund balance at that point on. So that's kind of the time to get home. That's why we started the initial conversations with assumptions to the, to the committee today. And then we actually, Dan, put together a couple scenarios as we talked about referendum possibilities and just started to show the committee, you know, if they went out for $500 per student or $800 per student and with inflation, what, what that would look like in the next five years and how that would, if with this, based on the assumptions that were made for the preliminary budget, if that played out in five years, how much would go up and go down and so forth, just to get that committee to start thinking around it. that committee to start thinking around it. While we have that conversation, more information to you again on May fourth to show you as a board, because then, uh, by that June, by that June date also, you're probably going to be working with the new superintendent. Uh, because sometime in July, for sure by July, you have to have your number and you have to have your, the question to the state if that goes on, on the referendum. And so, we'll be looking at late in May to June, working with Nate Walbrook and so forth, um, moving forward to try to do that. So it was a good meeting, uh, very informative. And I appreciate the twelve people that were able to show up. Anything that anybody would like to add that was on the committee?
No, I feel like that's a good summary. Yeah, I appreciate Dan's work, getting all the information to us. It was nice to just get a, this, this, a beginning feel, I think, for what we'll be looking at the next few months.
Any older unfinished business? I don't have anything. Okay. Onto action on the cross-country fundraiser and out-of-state trip. Do we want to take them one at a time or?
I, I think you would just do it together. They kind of go together. And so, um, again, uh, Tom was here and presented. And again, it's a fundraiser that, um, they do, they, and then as a donut fundraiser and then they have some other types of sponsors. And then they use that money to go on an out-of-state trip, um, with the cross-country team. And they use that money for the fundraiser to offset the cost. And whatever money is still needed, then the athletes, um, do, you know, have a spot, they have to pay so much as well. There are no, um, school funds, you know, uh, that we need a budget for, for that. It's all them taking care of it. One way or the other, they just want permission to do the fundraising and to be able to go out of state. And, um, so that, that's what we would like to take action on tonight and prove. So happy to get started with all this publicity. So.
Yeah. I make a motion to approve the cross-country fundraiser and out-of-state trip. Second.
Any questions or discussion? All in favor of approving the motion as presented, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed. Motion carries. And Tom, can you get to work?
Thanks for all your work, Tom.
Thank you all. I do have another place to be, but I wanted to be here with this. But I really appreciate that you're taking the students and students first. And then we'll go have a good time. We have the registration open. It's all drafted. I just didn't want to get ahead of this.
You had me at donuts.
All right. Discussion of the referendum costs and use of a communications consultant.
So that's, that's me.
Okay.
Uh, for now. And then, um, I will ask Alicia also to chime in as needed, um, because we have had a steering committee. At the last meeting last month, you voted to go ahead with a referendum coming up in November. It is pretty imperative that this district passes an operating referendum at some point. And so, um, since we failed one last year, we already started having a referendum, a steering committee. We met three times, maybe four, three times. But there are early morning, seven AM meetings we've been, we've been meeting. And there's been administrators, teachers, a parent and board members and, and so forth on this committee that's been talking about, um, kind of how we're going to run this year and what information we need to be able to put out, all the other things that need to happen. And learning from some of the things that we were not able to do last year with information, how we get information out, the tips we need to have and so forth. So we started talking about all those and, and realized that we have a lot of ideas. We just needed some help moving forward. And so, I just, there's a couple of things I want people to understand, um, because it all plays into this election, especially as board members, that a general election is what we had this past year, the even year elections. And those include national, state and county elections. They're organized by the county, um, and, and there's several polling places that happen. Um, they're the ones who get all the election judges and information out, those sort of things, um, for all the county type seats and so forth. Um, so, and the district sends information to the county and then it also sends out, uh, you know, we had to send, we sent out that one four-page flyer to talk about it. We, we have to send out one, we only required to send out one to do that. So we did that. And, um, but most of the work falls on the county and, and so forth to get that out. A special election, which in odd years is much different. Um, so if we has a, only has question regarding a school district referendum or a school board, um, you know, if there's a special meeting about, uh, you know, you had somebody resigning, you have to have a school board election, you could, um, but, so you can do for school, um, district, um, information. If Anne had to speak on anything, let me know. But it is organized by the school district. It is, um, run by people in the district. Uh, in our district, it is mostly run by Anne. Um, she gets some help, but it's mostly organized by her. You have to get the election judges yourself. You have to hire them. You have to, and in, in, uh, January with the meeting that we had, um, we did a resolution to have only the middle school be the polling place. And that's what we had two years, or three years ago, when we, um, did one, a special election. The last one we did was two, three years ago in twenty-twenty-one for the bond referendum. In November, we actually did one in May, I believe, and then, or April. And, because you can do those more than just one time a year. And it failed for the second time. And then we ran another one in November and that one, um, passed. And so, um, the, in operating referendum, uh, for the general election, so this past year, remember, it's run by, uh, county. Yep, it's run by the county. I did a little bit of trouble on the right side. It was, uh, we had eleven hundred dollars and some change for postage. We use ISG as a, uh, preliminary type, type of consultant, um, because they did, they helped us out in twenty-twenty-one. They were forty-five hundred dollars, but not a super extensive type of, of work. It was helping us just set up some mailings and, and the poster boards and stuff like that that we saw, put out there and things. So, um, those were the prints and anything that we sent out from ISG, the big boards. So that ran about six hundred dollars. Printed mailers that we had to do the printing part ran around two thousand dollars. And then our legal service, which I will, um, will probably happen again, or I believe happens again this year is when you send in, you have to have Ellers draw up, um, some information. You have to have a lawyer go through those questions, make sure it's right. You have to file it with the state in a certain way, a certain timeline. And they're the ones who help you do all that. And then they're the ones who also help with results and so forth. At the end, the legal service ran about seventy-five hundred dollars for us. So last year, these costs are approximate. So last year, we practically spent about fifteen thousand dollars on the twenty-four, um, referendum. And as we look at the twenty-one referendum, three years ago, our postage was thirty-four hundred dollars. We had, um, seven election judges that we paid out nineteen hundred and forty dollars, but we should have had nine. Two called in sick that morning. And so we had people do extra time. But, uh, you know, we should have had nine people to cover shifts and so forth. Administrative costs, um, part of the contract for, for the administrative assistance is when they run a special election that they, that they receive twenty-five hundred dollars as a stipend because of all the work and time that gets put in. Printed mailers, that's, uh, was thirty-two hundred dollar, or over thirty-two hundred dollars. I think we had two or three at the time. Uh, legal service was seventy-five, seventy-five hundred dollars. And county election services, we had to pay the county to help us out, um, and so forth. And, and then also miscellaneous, that would be like subway sandwiches and things like that for the workers. It was about, and other type of miscellaneous, you know, envelopes and things, two hundred and forty-five dollars. So altogether, three years ago, we spent over twenty-five thousand dollars on running an own special election. So this fall is a special election where we would have, you would have to expect more of that cost than the fifteen thousand dollars from last year. And, and with inflation, again, this was three years ago. And if you have the right number with inflation and depending how many mailings you send out, that cost could, you know, be close to thirty, thirty to thirty-five thousand dollars to run.
That's absentee ballots.
And that's absentee ballots. You have to send those out and postage for those. And so, yeah, you're looking at, you know, closer to thirty to thirty-five thousand dollars probably to, to run your own election. And that's not with any other types of services that you would use or anything like that. And so.
Mike.
Yes.
Why the, the big difference between postage between twenty, twenty-one and twenty-four? Did we do more mailings?
Yes.
In twenty-one?
Yes.
Okay.
In twenty-one, that includes your absentee ballots. And so, anytime that somebody requests an absentee ballot, they either request it to be emailed or printed. If I print it, I have to mail them an application first. And they send that back. And then I have to mail them the ballot. And then I have to include return postage back. So it's all in the district. And then the county election services, that includes, um, the balloting fees too, because it only charges us to print the ballots. But we use all of their equipment to run the.
Okay.
And I forgot to go back and check, but I forgot what the postage rate was three years ago, because I'm sure that's changed. Right? That's changed. So.
Well, do we get a bulk mailing rate?
We do. I mean, there's not a huge change, but there's savings.
Yes. So, okay. So the referendum steering committee is, uh, Alicia's on there, Abe Bodemeyer, principal, Jen Hegna as a director, Justin Blom as a teacher. Um, he's also been very, um, involved with the, the union and education in Minnesota, which I'll talk about in a little bit. And then Britt Vont, who's a, a parent and community member myself. And then others who have been kind of, um, given information or have stopped in, uh, online, Jeremy. And then Nate Walbrook, the new superintendent will be coming on in July. And then also Dan, I, and he, he came in to listen and was bringing us some information as well moving forward. So, um, so Baylor PR, uh, steering committee, uh, we met with Jeff Baylor, uh, on an occasion one day after school for about an hour. And, um, he gave us a presentation. Baylor PR works with school districts on, and on community engagement and referendum marketing. And they would produce things like meeting strategies, agendas, notes, post-meeting reports, uh, publicity invitations and reporting to the community, communication deliverables, also include slide presentations. They would do the handouts, the website content, news release, um, and then also how to give feedback methods. Uh, you know, what type of feedback can we get from people, including paper online collection they do? They will work with us to do a, a survey if we decide that we wanted to do that. Uh, you know, some things that I didn't think about is, you know, or we didn't do last year because it was so late by the time we figured out, but he's already like, well, if we move forward, have you thought about having a staff, um, big staff meeting? Have you thought about having a community meeting? Or even start explaining some of these things? And it's like, I haven't quite thought, you know, sometime in May, having meetings already to kind of do that. And then who runs it? What's the message? Who, who puts all that together? You know, um, we do not have a, compared to other big, big districts who run referendums or have recently, you know, and a couple of them, um, you know, just to the east of us, they have a, a large communications department. We don't. And so we have people that have other full-time positions and doing those things. So it's very difficult to put all the things that you need together and, uh, make these things happen and in a, in a right way. And then people work with your committees and say, tell us about you, your, and with the board, come meet with the board and say, tell us about what your purposes are and what you see and what, and what you would want. And they will put all that messaging together for, for the community. But, you know, again, the goal is to make sure that the, um, information is out there, it's out there efficiently and effectively, and it's the correct information. And it's done in a way where people will understand. And you can do it, and they have worked with several school districts for many years. And, um, Jeff is a former, uh, community, uh, or a, uh, communications director from the school district. And he also works closely with Ron Wilkie, who's, uh, been a superintendent for many years. So Ron does the superintendent side or the bit of school side and helps with that. And they'll, they'll be here. They'll work with other committees that come together and so forth. Um, and they will, they have that timeline that you kind of need and how to get information out. And, and especially with the information that was out there last year and now our things have changed and you want to get the right information out this year, so people really know what's going on here now, how much it's, it's different than last year. I think it's important to have this person. And that's what the steering committee, um, and that's why I'm bringing it forward. I also want to make sure everybody knew kind of the cost of that and what it's going to be. Um, again, they would develop a schedule from the present day, a, um, through election day. We, Nate Walbrook was on the meeting, uh, before this, the budget committee. His, his district that he's leaving, uh, has worked with Baylor PR, uh, two years ago to pass their operating referendum. And, uh, so he's, he's very familiar with him and he's already kind of reached out to him and we reached out to him. And they're prepared to start tomorrow. If it's approved tonight, they're prepared to start tomorrow and messaging and those meetings that need to go out and they're ready to go. So, um, and then also, uh, as I said, Justin Blom has been very, um, influential with, uh, in our district with education in Minnesota. He used to be a co, um, lead and the co-president for the union. And so he's used to working with education in Minnesota. He called, um, the head person that deals with, uh, referendums and so forth. Education in Minnesota, if you're organized, they will help you. They will help send out some mailings. They will help get, uh, teachers on board and so forth like that. And they, Baylor and education in Minnesota, uh, we've been told have worked very, uh, in many different other referendums. They work well, excuse me, they work well together and they kind of play off of each other in some ways and what, how that messaging works. Education in Minnesota appreciates the strategy behind what Baylor can bring forward. And Baylor, um, appreciates the work that education in Minnesota does to get the word out and get that information out. So again, it's a, a partnership all the way through. And I think that that's what people need to understand as well. And, uh, because this will, uh, it, it's more than just the people in this district or, and the staff in the district putting something out. It's got a really, it's, it's a big picture. We want to make sure everyone understands.
Mike, did the, um, did the steering committee look at other companies? Like, did you get bids from other, you know, to compare other PR companies?
Um, no. Um, we, I know what we did with, um, with the one we used last year and now basic.
ISG?
That was ISG, which is also our architect for our buildings. But, you know, they, they're used to doing bond referendums because that helps them, right? If you pass it, you're going to use them and that sort of thing. And Sue Peterson's very good. Um, and she was very helpful. But when it comes to putting out the messages to that, to this extent, you know, what, this is, you know, far more, uh, involved. Now, and from what we have heard and what I've known, um, Baylor is kind of the ones to go to at this point. Uh, they were the ones, uh, remember, we sent Abe Bodemeyer up to the, to St. Paul to do a referendum type workshops to get the information and so forth. And, um, and Baylor PR was there, helped explain stuff along with, but people to do the surveys and, and talk about the strategies and those sort of things. So that's why I reached out. Besides, uh, I had met them at conferences. They were at MSBA and so forth.
Yeah, I don't remember which one I sat in on, because at the roundtable discussions, I sat in on one of the.
I think you said, uh, for, was that for the surveys? There was.
I sat in on that one and then another one, but I can't remember the company. And maybe it was Baylor. I don't know.
Maybe they were, they were there. I know they were there because I, that's when I talked to Ron and then met Jeff for the first time. And so, um, again, and I guess that the other bus side of all this is, yeah, Nate Walbrook has worked with them before. So they kind of know, you know, and Nate will know how to work with them moving forward. And so, uh, the steering committee is recommending, I presume, for even more, for Alicia, anything else that you want to bring forward from the steering committee?
So I do think that's a really good question. Are there other companies like in our state that do this? And maybe that, maybe we should consider getting bids. Um, I will say this. I saw the price before we had the meeting with De- Dailers and I did not go in with an open mind. I was an immediate no, like capital N O, like that is way too much money. And I left that meeting feeling the complete opposite. Um, they are a small company and it sounds like they do go above and beyond and even include some extra things that other companies would charge for, that they would charge us for. Um, or that was Nate's experience anyway. Um, he, he did speak very highly of them as a small business and felt like, like they did a really good job and they were personally vested in, uh, his district passing the referendum. Um, it became very clear during the meeting to me that we need to, we need their help. Um, I think at first I was like, well, the community knows we need this. This should be easy to pass. But, um, when they were talking about the messaging and things like that, I just, I think there's a reason, there's experts that do this. And, um, I think this is vital. We communicate clearly and effectively with the community. And I think, I know this is a lot of money, but I, I think we need to do it. Yeah, that's all it is.
So the situation where the thirty-one thousand five hundred is, that's what it's going to cost, whether they do this much work or this much work? Are there, like you said, the other fees? Is there any, like, unknowns?
Well, and that's kind of why. Well, and that's kind of why I put out there the postage and all that, depends on how many mailings that you could do, right? They they will help, they will help with the printing and put all the printing, they have a print shop that they use that also has a mailing warehouse. They try to get the cost of, you know, less than eighty cents or eighty cents per household, that's all. And they work with the mailing people and they get all the addresses, they do all that stuff. There was, there's, the one that you see here is for thirty-one fifty, usually there, it's usually thirty-five thousand dollars. But because we are members of the Southeast Service Co-op, SSC, they are, they have a partnership with them. And so we get ten percent off of that. And this does not include, like, if you went out, if they were to try to help you do a really scientific type of survey out there. And you would pay another company to do that, that would be additional costs. And but they would help facilitate that. There was a couple other, like if you wanted to do a video and they were going to script videos and help you do the videos and those sort of. There was additional costs that there was another up to five thousand dollars, you know, that would be added. But so there were, there are two, two columns and I can certainly send those to you if I have them. But we definitely see that the one column that would be thirty-one five, that's. Are there other additional costs? Again, it depends on the post, it depends on postage and it depends on how many mailings you want to send out. So but that's there for you to help do all the setup, do all the messaging, do all of that other work.
My interest. Go ahead.
I was going to say, from the steering committee and from the Dale or meeting, did you get an impression that a survey would be necessary?
I think that's to be determined, I think that's something we need to talk about. I do know one of the survey estimates for a more scientific survey was twenty thousand dollars, just to give us a little bit of perspective of what we're talking about. So I feel like that money is much better spent on this personally. But my understanding of this was the thirty-one five would give us a comprehensive plan from now until election day. And then there's add-ons we can decide to do that could increase the costs, like if we did a survey or additional mailings.
And there's some small surveys that they will do, if you want a scientific one. For example, you go out, like we talked about before, they really call and they call so many people. And you get a tolerance for what level that people would want to spend or would be willing to spend. There's pros and cons to those types of surveys.
Right.
We don't like the answer surveys, so they take a while. The other part is it could be longer, it could take longer to get that information back and so forth. So those are things that, the point is if it's voted on to go with Dale or's thing, they would start that process. And we would have a steering committee meeting with them soon to start that, okay, what's our next step? So soon can we do this and what else do we need, that we would need to bring back. But it didn't sound like that the steering committee was totally like jumping up and down saying, yes, we need a survey. But we would work with Dale or's and kind of see what that, what that is, so.
And one other question about, it's not for, it's not about postage, but like the mailers. So when we did the mailers for the the last referendum, some households got two, some households got zero. So how, how did that happen again? And like.
Mostly those who want to have the number of voters or to each registered voter.
The list comes from the county.
Okay. Okay, so is there a way to clean it up?
Well, I think, I think that time it was actually cheaper to send to the broad list than to we people.
No, the county sends a list, so I contact the county and the county sends me a list and it's a merged list of every registered voter in every household. And it has to go to that list. And if there's any issues or questions, I have to direct them to the county because the county manages the list, we don't. We just obtain the information from the county.
Okay.
I know some people were like, really, we got two, why do we need two, we only have one?
Yeah, but some people didn't get any, some weren't like. So, or voters?
They might not, maybe not, maybe.
So, yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
So my thought would be, while I agree with both of you, like, I saw the number of. That's, that's tough to swallow.
Would it actually?
But when we're talking about truly the experts in the field, I think that's money well spent. They're true marketers and I think, to me, that's what we need is the marketing, we need to tell our story. I think that's what was missing is people need to know why and what the results are. And.
Yeah. Yeah.
I will just also say this is that, again, so minimum cost I put up there would be around sixty thousand dollars when you look at everything here with a minimum cost. It could increase from there depending on mailings and postage and what's, you know, those other things, just have to be.
This is if we use the PR company, yes.
Yes, the PR, otherwise you're looking thirty to thirty-five thousand dollars. But then you have to do how much work to get to do on your own and try and get the message out and figuring now who does that and that's can be difficult. The other part is this, is that, you know, we've said this and you voted on it before and Dan has said it, that it's imperative that this district at some point will need an operating referendum. To be able, because you can't keep cutting yourself out of, you can't keep reducing out of, out of this, right? Every year, there's, you know, this past year was pretty hard and starting to get to some staff members and and may staff members. And if you have to cut that again next year, it's going to be some pretty steam stuff. So, you know, when you're looking at a possible one point nine million dollars a year, that's what, last year we went out for eight hundred dollars a student. It was rather one point nine million dollars a year. When you look at that possibility and they're spending, you know, thirty-one thousand, thirty-two thousand or a little bit more, sixty thousand altogether. In order to get the right message out, in order for people to really understand and with every, with the background of what's happened in the last year and so forth. You want to make sure you get the right story out and the best story out, at the rate of investment and rate of return in that. You know, you don't want to say, well, we did spend it, we did get the message out, people say, I didn't understand. And then you are like, have to go out and spend it again later on. So it's, to our districts, you know, our point saying, yep, we have to go forward, we want to make sure we get the right information out. We want to make sure that it's the right push because it is, it's imperative that people know what our, what the needs are. And how we want to keep our, this district at the, at the level that it's at and not have to do any more reductions and be able to put that out. So I think it's for the board to understand, yep, we're, you know, I would recommend that you're all in and you move forward. I think that's an important piece.
Do we have an itemized list of what's included in the proposal of thirty-one point five?
Yes, I just, I'd have to go up or I can send it to you or whatever. I, and I, we can put out there on, we can add to the agenda or add it to the website. But they'll be, they'll be staring at websites, so we can put that out there, so.
I guess let me ask, Alicia, since you kind of sat in on this, with what you saw with column one, okay, this is what we would get with this without adding the extras. You personally see that, yes, that would be worth it, that would be beneficial, it would definitely help us get our message across with what's included in the column?
I wasn't at the meeting where they showed, I haven't seen the column one and column two.
What I, you were on there with.
I don't think, I don't think I was.
At the proposal?
I don't think I was there. If I was, I don't remember, I don't remember seeing column one and column two. Sorry, so I don't want to say because I don't remember seeing that. I, um, I, I feel like we're maybe at the point where, I mean, I think Lisa's question, are there other companies that do this is a good question. And I think it would be good to get this going as soon as possible. So I feel like we're at this crossroads where, would there be a way to make a motion that, I don't know. I feel like these are questions we could answer in a day, but.
I feel like that steering committee is comprised of some intelligent, dynamic people that have taken all the, and I don't want to speak for them. But have taken all this information, digested it. And I can't think of anybody in that committee that hasn't gone top to bottom, pros, cons.
I appreciate that, but it, I didn't think to ask, I think I assumed that this would have been, you know, that we had compared companies. And so if we haven't done that, I do feel like that's something we need to do. I don't know.
In terms of comparing companies, I've also heard of this specific company from a board member from the Twin Cities. That they use them and they have very great reviews of their services.
Okay.
So many gets, I don't know how many other companies are there out there that provide services.
Right.
But it looks like we've heard from several different unrelated sources.
Yes. I have no doubt that this company will do a really good job for us, I have no doubt of that, yes.
Is there like, can we right now access that information of what's in thirty-one K? Just, just like, this is right now, like, I've heard that it's a list of how not to.
If you give me a minute, if you give me a minute, I can go print it off and put it out.
Yeah, that's a great idea.
Yeah, that's a, that's a great idea.
It's my work right now.
I know, and I'm, I'm sorry that I didn't think of these questions earlier, I should have.
If you think, no catalog?
Yeah, yeah, do you have it?
I usually have everything in my bag.
The question that comes to my mind is, is what, how many companies do this, like, is this a?
Right.
Probably not many, right?
Probably the one selling that you're saying was that.
Nate highly recommended them. And he's been talking to them, like, he talked to them today, he was at the union and he talked to them today.
I think that's important.
And they're writing a rock of all tomorrow's ready for us.
Yeah, I don't know anything of like when he went for the, for the non-serve him.
I don't.
He mentioned other companies and he decided to go with that.
I don't remember him talking about that.
I just know he said he used.
Yeah, I don't know if they were already hired.
Dot M and.
He probably said it, but I don't.
So what I'm trying to understand right now is that in this thirty-one K, will this be sufficient or is it just like the very minimum?
No, I think it will be, I think we could decide, like, my understanding was that if we just went with the thirty-one K, that would be a comprehensive, good approach. And we have, you know, Jen Hagna that can help us with videos, but they, like, we could pay extra if we wanted more professional videos, but they would for sure guide us. And we have, I, I felt like we wouldn't necessarily have to spend more than that if we chose not to. It would still be absolutely worth it and it would feel comprehensive.
Okay.
I like your stance there, you're right, Jen, Jen would do a great job, would have some of those capabilities in-house. While they may not look like Fox News or whatever, CNN, CNN, I'm sorry, I meant to say like.
Scratch that.
Just for the record, I don't watch any of the news, they, you know. Like your favorite show, it's not going to look like that, but it would look like a professional, well-done.
And I did really like that when Nate talked about their company, it's like a handful of people that worked there. He felt like he was, like, he had had relationships with them and that they, I wish I could remember what specifically he said they did. It was an analysis of something that they did and that they do for their clients, that normally they would, that would be like an à la carte thing you would pay for. I need to call it that.
Even, even like regarding the survey, right? We, I think we've talked about that we want to have a survey to like understand the, our community's willingness of like getting to a certain point. So the, what Dr. you're about to describe, the more scientific survey, okay, does it mean where they will call?
Yeah.
Or like, so what does it mean more scientific survey, like survey is a survey?
So it's, there's very different methods. Like, it's like send out, like, basically what we did for the, kind of high-end process, something like that, that would be like the unscientific.
Okay.
The scientific one was they, my memory was anyway, that they randomly choose four hundred voters and they call them and have conversations with them.
Four hundred?
Yeah, yeah. So it's a large sample size, you know, for the, yeah. I don't know that that's necessary and there's, you know, there could be value in a, a different tier for sure.
Okay. So, but a survey is included in this thirty-one K?
No, I don't think a survey was included.
Okay.
No, I don't think he said it was extra.
No, I don't think so.
Non-scientific survey would be included in the one K or not?
No.
No, I think you said that was like twenty, twenty thousand.
Survey would be.
Yeah, five to twenty thousand.
Depending on.
And that would not be random.
It, what if they call?
This company does not do random surveys.
Yeah, so the, I think.
The worst motherfucker does that.
Yes, it'd be using a different company.
Major killer does that.
Yeah.
Those cost about thirty-five grand. And they're very, thirty-five answers, four answers. And they'll analyze and present to the school board. These guys think they could do a survey more like a survey party.
Oh, right, right, right.
Because those are never random because.
Yeah, right.
They choose to do it.
And you said you would get available. Do you remember that answers any of these other questions? Do you remember, were you there when they were talking about that there's like a, they analyzed something that they didn't charge for?
I'm not sure this, this is like a private communications company designed for smaller districts that don't have departments. Up in the metro, most every district has their own communication department, so. They found their niche and could be interrelated in front of my head, not for years.
Oh, yeah.
And teacher.
Yeah. So it's a good, that's helpful.
Yeah, they'll do a good job.
Yeah.
They do a good job.
Yeah, good.
And they have experience of doing this, so like all this makes sense, it's just like.
Yeah. Thank you.
Print it out for a company, so you'll have to, second column is next page.
This is helpful.
Thank you.
Yeah, I, I mean, I think it was probably all goes away, but I feel like we have to do everything we can to get this referendum passed.
It would help to make a name for them as well.
Right, right.
Having a relationship if I'm being a little cold, so if you're going to be good asking.
So this up on the top section is talking about survey draft questions distribution, four thousand. You see that?
So the third-party coordination.
So they, they coordinate it and, and help you decide what questions you want on the survey, but you'd have to pay for the survey for understanding, yeah.
Or if we can just develop something like a survey monkey, right? Or like something that we can communicate with the district in an efficient way, then we can do that.
Okay, I feel like they could.
Recommend.
Guide us, yeah. Like, once they understand our situation, I feel like they could guide us, so.
No, this makes sense, I think for the D R here.
So I have it up on the screen as well, so people can see, so you can see that, yeah, so column one. And then if you, survey coordination with the third party. And then if they did a survey, draft questions, distribution, public, you know, it'd be four thousand dollars more. So you can kind of see all the different things that they're going to do along the side. And then at the end, you have the thirty-five thousand dollars, you have thirty-five hundred for the SSC discount. So the difference is thirty-one five compared to the thirty-six, four fifty. So, but there you would get photography, if they want to come in and you want to shoot some film or do photography stuff and you want them to do it. Jen Hagna's pretty good at doing some of that, which would certainly help with video strategy and script oversight. If you were to do one and you want them to do that, do that part of it, then they would charge you six hundred dollars more for that. And then so.
Survey, yeah.
And then the survey, so that's really kind of what it's about. And like I said, just Alicia had said, you know, Nate Walruck had worked with this company. He said when they did, because they are such a small company, even though they had other clients, they pretty much felt like they were, they were their only client at the time.
Right.
Because they were always available, always checking in, always sending stuff. And we felt like, you know, his district was the one that they were taking care of and they, and they did pass. You know, and they actually didn't start their referendum information until August. And so they did it real fast, real, and they went all in and did what they could, didn't start till August and they passed it, I remember, so.
And then I think I would just like to reiterate that the Education Association, the Teachers Union, their political organizers said that they rely on companies like this to effectively do their job. And they're a huge asset, though, you know, they'll help us phone banks and things like that.
So if we started now versus August, the price doesn't change?
Okay, no.
It's pretty much from now.
Yeah.
This price here. And if you just wait till August, I mean, they were like, you don't want.
We're not gonna, right.
As I said, they were talking about having, already sending out parent, our parent meetings, staff meetings, they would help put all that stuff together, help get the message out and ready. They would help put all that stuff together, help get the message out already, what needs to be done at this stage. And then, over the summer, you know, like, at different events, like, the neighbor days, what would you do for that? You know, and then, really, when August kicks in, that's when you really want most of your stuff ready to go. So, when you have open houses and those sort of things, you're getting that message out, you're having town hall meetings, you're sending out messages at that time, so... And you've coordinated at that time with education, and so to make sure, even if it's once a week, if they're sending out something and you're sending out something for education and so, maybe they can get that message, and Taylor will help you put that message together.
And it also looks like this proposal provides two options, one with the survey and one without the survey.
Yes.
So, with the survey additional four K, we can decide what moves later on?
Yes, and that would be, that would be something that would be talked about rather quickly, you know, once we meet with them and talk to them about the survey part, and then we would come back. But again, those are some of those additional costs that might come up, that you have to...
But this also provides useful information about what's the maximum that we can go with them for. So, this looks like that second option, the second call, would be the maximal? Okay, that makes sense for me, thank you.
With an asterisk, depending on how many, how many mailings they decide to go up, but just their services themselves, that would be the maximum that would be used.
Right.
Maybe it would be responsible to ask you, Dan, do you feel like this is something we can, obviously, it's not ideal to set money on this. Do you feel like this is something we can do, and in your experience, maybe is worth it?
I mean, just run the numbers, and there is two million dollars in there.
Right, right, you're right, thank you, yeah. I think I'm comfortable going with Taylor, is it Deller or Taylor?
Taylor.
Taylor, okay. How's everyone else feeling? Yeah, you feeling comfortable with that, Lisa?
Yeah.
Want to make a motion?
I make a motion to hire Taylor PR for our referendum engagement, or however it's wanted to be, or consultants.
I second.
Motion and second, any questions or discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, motion carries.
I will let them know tomorrow, we'll write them off, ready to...
And then, we'll look at second reading and adoption of policy amendments.
Again, these were, we went through them at the last meeting. There were just some minor changes when it comes to replacing the curriculum instruction assessment, for example, with superintendent. I don't know if you want to go through all of those as well, is, was there any questions that people had after the first reading that we read last time?
No.
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 So, then I don't know if we need to go through them again.
I don't think so.
Can I take a motion to approve those?
So, move. Second.
Motion and second, any discussion or questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, carries. Review our district operation plan.
So...
Yeah.
I just want to give a little quick update, and then I'll let you guys speak to each other. But remember that we have a district operation plan, we've had, the board has their part of it, and then each building and each director has their parts of it as well. Remember, we had a kind of a draft that went out for people to take a look at, and then when I talked to the administrators, it was recommended to talk to them a little bit more about this. They said that, you know, when you read the agenda at the beginning of every board meeting, you have your priorities, your three priorities, and that's how their D O Ps are set up as well, so they recommended that the board do that as well. So, then I went back and looked at the three, looked at the four areas that you wanted to cover, and put them under those umbrellas, personalized learning for students, for all students in pursuit of their academic excellence, and then inspire students and staff to develop their character, share their talents, and apply their learning, and then also maintain excellence in resource management. And then, we took the information, there were some questions that were sent out that are there, that now you can just go through this and draft it, Jeremy can take notes as you go and then make changes. And I will too, but we can make changes of that and that, so that's where the changes are, and I didn't have it the last means, I apologize. But then, if you feel comfortable with it at the end, we can approve it, and I can, for, if we have to wait till next month, we can do that too.
Okay. Thank you, and thank you for talking to the administrators. It was feeling chaotic to me, and I couldn't figure out why, and their feedback was, now it feels like the way it should be now, so I appreciate their input. I think for, there was a target, under key targets for the second one, inspire students and staff to develop character. Number two, talks about monitoring and support, but it doesn't say how we would monitor. Wondering if we need to figure that out. And maybe we don't need to decide that now, I don't know, usually you put that in here and...
It might just be something that, I mean, that's a good question, but it might be something that between you and Mr. Walrep, that you would say, you know, again, when we have our presentations, especially by our principals and so forth, I ask that you bring in different groups that would show, you know, the profile of graduate, and how they're doing that in their classroom rooms and so forth, and that would be a good way to monitor what's happening, as well as having Mr. Walrep talk about admin means, you know, how is the profile of graduate coming out. We talked about, we were working on rubrics for each building, what that would be moving forward, and maybe they would pick up on that as well and continue that conversation. But between, I think, superintendent and the admin, these presentations, you'd be able to monitor, you know, what's happening in the buildings and so forth. But, and just ask them to do it. The other part is, you know, each quarter, they give, each principal gives a rent report, and it should be around the profile of graduate.
Right.
And they can specifically talk about how they're meeting the profile of the graduate, and that's how you would monitor that.
Okay.
People ask questions that way.
Okay.
That's just one way, I think, between you and Mr. Walrep, you can take it out and monitor.
Yeah, so we could just leave it open, and that sounds good.
Any other questions, or...
The only other key target I thought maybe we should leave open and get Nate's input is under community engagement, number four. I don't know that I want, that we should specify how often, it just says the board and superintendent will participate in community events and create intentional spaces for dialogue, at least, you know, twice per year or whatever, I feel like maybe we could let him fill in.
Yeah, I think...
We could just get rid of the frequency.
Stakeholders' period.
Yeah.
Yeah, period after that.
Okay. Yeah, otherwise, I think it looks steady.
If there's more community events at some point, then we'll...
Right, right.
And you've already done, you've added, you know, the board added the listening sessions that you do before meetings and so forth, it's just a matter of, and, you know, I've always encouraged the board, and maybe just do it more if the buzz continues, that you have an article in the buzz, you know, about things, and you have somebody from your board, from being the communicative person that would work with whoever's doing the buzz, to put something in monthly, or something like that, as an update about what's happening, because that's just the update from the meetings, but, you know, here's things that you're working on, or things that are out there, that would be the thing.
I think it's a good idea.
One question that David had on the community engagement key target one. What is it that we are looking for that is different than what we are currently doing with listening sessions? And what are we aiming to accomplish that isn't already in place?
Well, including forums, so I, when we talk about working with Taylor's, like, I think one thing that they will probably recommend, or will at least talk to us about, is holding town halls.
Yeah.
So, I think about things like that. I also think, just in general, we would be well-served to figure out ways to try to communicate with the community, so I don't know what that looks like, but, and I think it would, like, we have to approve, I don't think we're currently communicating effectively with the community, so it would all be the goal to improve that.
Yeah, that was one of my questions, what, is a forum like a town hall, is that what we're talking about?
Yeah, or we could...
And then, could the whole board be present? Because that'd be, that'd be a forum then, right?
Well, you're not, you're not hoping to be a forum, but, you know, if you haven't made do that, you know, it's a state of the district address, you know, that sort of thing.
And we could probably post it in advance if we needed to.
Yeah, you would post it in advance so that people would know, and all of the members are there, you're not making decisions there.
Right, okay, I'm sure we could all be there or not, or...
I don't know.
But there could be some, some, some school districts, I've seen, they could state of the district address at times, and, you know, even Walrep, and...
Another thing that I see us doing of, like, going to township meetings and doing, you know, doing stuff like that. But we could change that word forums, it could be events, or we could leave it out and just say including listening sessions.
But listening session isn't, isn't too...
Yeah, that's not, that's what we have.
Oh, right, agree, agree, yeah, and I think the two ways is important.
Yeah, I think leaving forums under is okay.
Okay.
Yeah.
Do you think that addresses David's question? Yeah?
I think, yeah, and I think we just would have our message of what the, what the board has to say, and it's not one individual saying it, no.
Right, right.
But that's Taylor's.
Right, right.
So, I wouldn't, I wouldn't think that would be anything to think about any further.
You know, just put out there, you're, you know, board members, you do a lot of service already, you do a lot of time, you're at these meetings, you're doing a lot of things.
Right.
You add a lot of these things, and, you know, that's more time away from families and more commitment on your part.
Yeah.
Which is great, but at the same time, you just have to be careful, I just want to warn you as well.
Yeah.
I do see the importance, but you are family people and so forth, but these are all good things super towards, so...
Yeah, I think some of it is partly in a more acute need with the referendum and our situation. It doesn't mean we'll necessarily always have to be that busy, I, yeah.
But I think too, you make a good point, like, we have a very specific and urgent message to relay.
Right, right.
We may have not an urgent message, but we still may have messages that we just need to get out, that is communication, so maybe it just tweaks that.
And that was one thing Taylor did, talked about, was informing the board of the messaging, and what they can do, what you can do during all that time, because you also have to be the ones to go to these small, maybe neighborhoods, or go to autos and talk to them at autos, or any of those groups that you know of that are around, right? But you know what the messaging is, and you know what is to present, and it's just not one person, not the superintendent, board during that time. And that's what happens in most districts that really do well, is that they all understand, they're all on board, and it's a big push starting from August on at, at open houses and all those things, people, there's a presence, so... You have to get your bigger name tags, and can work on that.
Yeah.
Okay?
Any other questions? Is this something we want to take action on? Do we want to leave it as a tentative D O P?
Again, if we don't do it now, we, I would want it to be done for sure at the May meeting, because I want to be able to put all that together, because, or, because I like to have a great company.
The U, the board, to look at for all the, all the schools, as well as their handbooks, and put it all together, like, here's what we're doing, and here's how we're doing it.
And at the May meeting before everybody leaves, so...
Is anyone not comfortable taking action?
Well, there's still a question about, let's see, is this feasible, or might need to talk to Dan about this?
Yes, I think we can delete all of those notes.
The excellence in resource management, the notes under that?
Because they, in red, I think those questions were all answered within the red.
Okay.
So, the question was, develop and annually update financial forecast in three years?
Through here, and we can, well, I can make changes and send them out to everybody, but I think, you know, if you're good with what's here, I think that's...
My only reservation here would be that the new superintendent should weigh on this, in my opinion. If we are changing this annually, that it has not such a big deal, and it's okay for that process to get to like the next, beginning of twenty twenty-six. But I'm, so we potentially could leave this as a tentative, and then have the district superintendent approve, basically that would keep them on the board.
But like you said, that would delay getting that to the administrators.
Well, the administrators would see it. You could do it, you could do it, but what I'd like to do is be able to put it all together, including the, including the administrative ones, all of them to put it in one document for everyone to see, because then as they go into next year, they, you know, they come back, and if there's some changes that are made, then, you know, some people may not... So, I just, again, I would just, we can wait till May, and we can try to do that, but I would, and I would like to move forward with it some...
To answer your question, we review it annually, it's up to us if we want to change it.
Right, so maybe it's tentative as of right now, subject to the new superintendent's approval. So, we can share it with everybody who needs to have access to this, but we want to make sure that the new superintendent is comfortable with this, because that would be his, you know, what he needs to do over the next whatever years, especially if we don't need to update it every year.
Would it be possible, I don't want to ask Nate to do work, but he's not giving...
I wouldn't put anything out there, I would never make any major decisions or anything like that, or have a board stuff. I mean, we do ask him for some input on some things, but I wouldn't want to do this unless the superintendent is on board and can meet with you.
Right.
And if you, you can always, this is not a set stone also, either, so it could be tentative. I just want to make sure that things are, when I leave, here's what it says, and now, if you get together with him and say, can we alter this to, we may, you can really do that, but...
So, could we approve it, and if, when he sees it, if he feels like he'd like to go in a different direction, then we add it back to the agenda at that time, and then revise it at that time?
Fine, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
So, do we want to take action on this? Do we want, how do we want to move forward from this with that question being asked?
Can we just say that we're comfortable distributing it?
So, we take actions and passing in?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah. I move to adopt the board goals for the district operation plan.
Second.
Motion and second, any questions or discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, motion carries. Did you make it to the city council?
I did.
I swapped.
I did.
Okay. Do we have a city council update?
I do, so we have a new sheriff, and I don't know if I got his last name right, but his name is Jeremy Utcher, I think, or Cutcher. All I could hear, and I even went back to re-watch it, and then he said it so fast, so it's Utcher something. There, outside of like, things like planning, zoning, things like that, there were, one of the things that stood out is that the, if the new basketball court's over at...
Part of you?
Yeah, so there's been a lot, there's been a lot of noise, and there's been some vandalism, and so, there is talk about putting cameras there. And, yep.
That is such a win for the city, that whole part there.
Yeah, and, yeah, so it would be good to keep it nice, and, you know, I don't know, I don't know if that's something we could, like, maybe, you know, caution, or put, you know, let parents know that, hey, this is happening, let's keep our courts good, we'll do our part and see if we, you know, I don't know, that's something we could put in the buzz, about keeping the courts, and I mean, it's outside a school, but...
Yeah, that, that's just the hard part about the fine line between, you want to partner with them, you know, and so forth, but...
Yeah. Or just B V A, now, this is what happened. I do, well, yeah, but I mean, they're, you know... I do believe they had, that was brought up, but I could be getting that wrong with the other...
Okay.
But, yeah, I think that, but cameras were something that might be a deterrent, whether they're real or not, but that was, that was kind of a thought. So, that was with city council, I have that for you too.
Anything on the cell phone tower at all, did they talk about that?
Nope, I have nothing on the cell phone tower.
I haven't heard any information on it yet. They, they backed me, or whatever, said things like that.
There was a permit, no, that... There was a permit, no, that was on second Ave, it was sewn up.
It was, wasn't it on their agenda for the middle of April?
Yeah.
Because it went through planning and zoning.
Unless, well, yeah, I saw something on planning and zoning, but it looks like it was just for second Ave Northwest.
That, that's the high school.
Oh, it is?
And we, that's the high school.
Oh, then my bad, yeah, it was approved.
Okay.
So.
And nobody came to speak about it or any?
Nobody came to speak about it, and it was, it was really talked like an address, so I didn't, I didn't, okay, so. And that was fun, when they asked me like if I had updates, I was like, oh, I'm just here to observe, I didn't, I, and then, and Justin was so nice to say, well, you have news to share, and I'm like, oh, yeah, we have a thing super. And so I'm like, oh, like, oh my goodness, I felt like a doe in headlights, but it was, it was good, I want to do it again, so it was fun.
Awesome. Another ZED update.
Yes, and so I have this booklet, I was just going to pass it around, does that have a summer academy going on, kind of like the CEC does with activities, so if your kids have any activities that you can't get in, maybe that's an alternative. For, there's some important dates coming up, like ALC graduation on May 28th, the Future Sons Award is on June 2nd, the activity day is on May 9th, that's that fun activity day for.
Friday.
It is, it's May, so that's best, yeah, it's at Triton. And then the ZED Science Fair ends, or ended at Cassett Manorville, oh, that's past, April 3rd, so, and then just a reminder about the ESY programming, I have the dates, I don't have the dates on here, they're at KM Swirville and the Future Sons on June 10th, I think that's more for ALC students. But that was pretty much it, we had April's occupational therapist month, we recognized our therapists in the area, and then we, I, I missed her name because it was in an email, but the, on Wednesday, there was a surprise to one of the teachers at ZED, recognized for teacher of the year kind of a thing, so I can look that up and get her name, but that's what I have.
Any questions or discussion on the consent agenda? Or would move to look for a motion to move forward from that?
I just want to mention the treasurer's reports, I was like, why are we, so the treasurer reports that we'll be approving are from July, August, September, October, November, I just, I asked Michael questions, I just want to make sure everyone knows what it was. I was like, why are we doing this now? This is from before, we are board members, this doesn't make sense, but it's because basically the reconciliations were just completed.
Yeah, and so those were, remember, we didn't have the ability to do that in the fall because there's still verified numbers and trying to get that revised budget done, so Dan and the office have been working really hard on getting the system down so that reconciliations are much easier to get, or at least we get the right information in to be able to do it, and so he is able to, they've been able to put, that's where they're at right now, but December, January, and February are, he just said he worked on February this morning, and then it'll be March, so at the, at the meeting, you'll probably see all those. And what will happen is once we're totally caught up, if it's, if it's May, you will see, the May meeting, you'll see March, the June meeting, you'll see, you know, April, they're like one, one and a half months behind, because you have to get all those things in, but those are the reconciliations for each, each month moving forward, so you'll be able to see that, so.
And was there anything alarming in this that came up? To my untrained eye, I didn't see anything alarming in that one. No, okay. Okay, thank you.
Okay, I had a question on policy 612, and it was just, it's just talking about Title I and parents interacting with the school. And under, under F, it says involve parents in the activities of the school, which may include establishing a parent advisory board. Do we, do we have a parent advisory board for Title I?
For Title I, we don't have a parent advisory board, I know there are, we, I recommended that they set one up for that, but also we do send out information to all of our parents whose kids are in Title I.
Okay.
And ask them to come into a night that they've explained all that, and gives the opportunity for them to ask questions and what the program is about and so forth like that, so.
And is this policy just K through four? Did I read that somewhere?
Uh, well, our Title I, no, because it, it can go, it can go up to grade eight, uh, grade eight, really. We don't really have enough kids at high school to do that. And we don't, right now, it's just that the K five level is, is what the schools that have Title I, we don't have enough at the middle school to do that, so. But when they do, then they hold these meetings and send out information.
All right. Would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Seconded.
Motion and a second. Any questions or discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, motion carries. We will get to donations, our treasurer is not here tonight. Anybody volunteer to read the donations?
I'll read the donations. All right, we have $1,500 from the Byron Youth Football Association for, oh, do I have to read the whole thing? I'm sorry.
No, don't just read what I did.
Okay. $1,500 from the youth Byron Youth Football Association for the Color Run. Sue and Brad Wilson donated $20 Walmart gift cards for our unhoused students, and Cadlock family, $500 for bear packs, so. With gratitude, I'd like to make a motion to accept the donation.
Second.
Motion and second. Any question or discussion? It would be a roll call resolution.
Jeremy?
Aye.
Lisa?
Aye.
Carrie?
Aye.
Alicia?
Aye.
Manny?
Aye.
Kelly?
Aye.
Uh, information miscellaneous items, anything?
Been prom this weekend, if you're lucky, so we'll see you all that dress up.
Could be a car dealer, a cheap shot size.
There you go.
All right, that brings us to the final item. Entertain a motion for adjournment.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor say aye.